Good morning. I'd like to call this meeting to order for the first Retirement Plan Committee meeting. And the second item we have on the agenda here is the discussion and presentation from Omar De Jesus, Finance Director.
Good morning. I want to start off with item Agenda A, which is just an introduction as to the district's current plan structure, which is a 401A, 457 plan combination. I provided a memo to kind of give you an overview of how the plans complement each other and how they're currently structured. The district currently provides all of its employees the ability to obtain a 5%, up to 5% match. So what that means, if they contribute 2%, then they receive a 2% match. If they contribute 3%, they receive 3%, 5%, 5%. Once they contribute 6%, then we still only contribute a 5 matching max contribution on their behalf. Once again, I said it's a 401, 457, two plans. They kind of complement each other. The 401A is the primary plan. I've provided the plan documents for your review as well. So in those documents, and we'll address them a little bit more in detail later on in the meeting, but the 401A actually dictates the match, the vesting schedule, the contributions, election window. It really tailors how we want to structure that plan for the primary plan on the 401A. The 457 is more of a complementary plan, so if they want to contribute more than that 5% max, ideally that additional contribution would be dictated to the 457. Exhibit B that I provided for you guys, we've been working with ICMA since 2016 to try and make the plan a little bit more flexible. And a lot of the issues that we'll discuss today are regarding, you know, conversations that we've had with ICMA to try and tailor the plan a little bit more flexible for our employees, so they have a better understanding of what's going on and have some more flexibility. So we sent them a request in 2016 requesting that they allow employees on the 401A plan the ability to change their election and contribution to a higher amount. From right now, the plan only allows a 60-day window for you to make your initial contribution. Once you make that contribution, you are, it's irrevocable, you cannot change it. So let's say you are, you know, frontline staff and you decide, you know, I'm living paycheck to paycheck, I decide to contribute 3%. The district matches the 3%. And you get a raise or a promotion, you are stuck at that 3% contribution rate for the life of the plan. You can never change that 3% on the 401A side. So what the district has done to try and accommodate that is now they can contribute their other 2% into the 457, and then we contribute another 2% to try and allow them to receive the full 5% benefit. So the plan was never designed to do that. We've kind of made that accommodation in order to, so the employee's not missing out on that additional contribution. So one thing we felt like we wanted to do is give them the ability to say, hey, I started at 3%. I've gotten a promotion, I've gotten a raise, you know, my paycheck, my finances are a little bit more in line. I want to contribute 5. I want to make that additional 5% in the 401, keep one plan, so I don't have to administer two different plans and have the headache of doing so. ICMA has come back and told us several times that there's no way to accommodate that, that So, you know, during that process, like I said, we've had conversations with ICMA. We reached out to a couple of other vendors just to see if we would get the same response. Some of the other vendors have told us, it's really in how you design the plan. So in my memo, I've noted typically how 401, 401 and 457s are created. The 401 is strictly for employer contributions only. So that way, there isn't that confusion of, you know, if they want to increase or decrease, it's only strictly for the employer portion. 457 would then take all employees. So same example, a new employee comes in, if we structure our plan a little bit differently, their 3% match would go, or their 3% contribution would go into the 457, the district would put their 3% into the 401A. And that way, they're two different ones, and they can make any adjustments they want on the 457 side. The 457 gives them full flexibility to make changes in contributions, amounts, decrease or increase. Where it becomes a little bit sticky is, let's say you have an employee who puts in the 3% and then decides to go to 4 or 2%. The district's already made that 3% match on the 401A side. We don't have the ability to go back and change that 3% to 2% to keep fluctuating with them, to keep it in line with the matching concept. So that's something that we need to consider as we go forward in our plan design, is do we want to have them in two separate pots and try and help the employee have those differences? Do we want to have them have a mandatory contribution where we state, if you contribute at least 3%, or we're requiring you to contribute 3%, we'll give you all 5 once you do that. If you decide to put in 4 or 5, then it doesn't matter because you're getting the full 5% from the district. But it eliminates that hassle of us having to track and fluctuate our percentages to keep them matching. So there's some struggles that we've been having to try and work around, and I don't know that there's a perfect design. We just have to try and come up with the best that we feel gives the employee flexibility and allows them to make some alterations as life changes, and allows the district to keep, keep good tabs on that as well. So that's kind of just an introduction as to the 401, 457.
I had a couple of questions.
Yep.
I'm more familiar with the K plans, so.
Yeah.
We had no need for two plans.
Right.
But what we did have is a discrimination issue. In other words, if we had to test for high, highly compensated employees and making sure they weren't getting more benefit than lower compensated, do we have that issue?
We do not have that issue.
Okay, so it doesn't matter.
Doesn't matter.
One of the solutions that we did was our match was basically, instead of a one-for-one, it was two-for-one on the first percent and then graduated downward, so that we encouraged more people to apply them. You can't put a dollar in, you can't dispute the intelligence of, if I put a dollar in, you put in two for me.
Oh, yeah.
Kind of thing. I mean, one-for-one is, that's pretty lucrative, but two-for-one is way up front.
Right. Yeah, that's something to consider. I think the biggest issue with 401Ks versus the 401A, the 401A was designed just for governmental entities. So the 401K in the private sector, you can go in there and structure that two-to-one, one-to-one, and the employee has the fluctuability, the flexibility to change from a 3% to 2%. We don't, they don't care.
Anytime.
On the 401A, the IRS has dictated that it's irrevocable, one-time election at 60 days.
That was my next question.
So that's what's causing the, I guess, burden with having, allowing the employee to change that contribution amount. So we've gotten in a situation where we have some employees who have started at a 3% and now we've had to tailor that 457 to try and accommodate that extra 2% now.
I could see it going both ways. Some people may find, due to their life changes, that they can't contribute to 5. They thought they could, and they can cut back to 3 or whatever. They don't have that flexibility at all.
The 457 does. The 457, and that's why, once again, typically those are set up just for employee-only contributions, so they can move. But once again, as they move and fluctuate, in theory, the match should also, but we don't have that flexibility in the 401A. So we either have to decide, stop that flexibility and set it at a 3% minimum, you have to contribute 3%, and we'll give you 5. And that way, there's never any decrease. If they want to put in 4, 5, 6, 7, 10, it doesn't matter because we've already contributed our 5, and we've forced them to put in 3. That's just one alternative. If, let's say we have that same situation, and we put in 3, and we put in 3, if they go up to 4 or 5, that additional 4 and 5% for us, that additional 1 and 2%, would have to go in the 457 because we couldn't put it in the 401A.
We can't match it.
We would have to match it in that 457 plan, which right now is not set up to, it does not have a vesting schedule, it does not have election period, it's kind of just a, it's supposed to be a supplemental plan, it's not supposed to be designed to take employer contributions.
The Florida retirement system is currently designed that way. So if governments that participate in FRS, their employees have a mandatory 3% contribution. Governor Scott, he put that in place maybe six years ago, somewhere in that range. So my question is, for the other government contributions that you listed here, do any of these have a mandatory employee contribution that you know of?
Honestly, we didn't check that.
We didn't check that? Okay.
No, but that's something that we need to look at. I think that's something to consider.
Because I, I think that is an option for us, having a mandatory 3%. I feel that retirement is that important for our staff going forward, especially the younger generation and knowing that what's going to happen to our social security and other things. So I think that's something to look at, if you could find out some information on some other plans. Now, these other governments, do you know if they have ICMA, or do they have Nationwide, or do you think all of these are Nationwide, the ones that you listed in the supplement?
I believe all of those are Nationwide.
Nationwide, okay.
Nationwide was able to provide those.
And I believe Nationwide is probably the, the top administrator for governmental plans in the state of Florida, is that right?
Right, correct.
Okay.
It's a very good website, very, very user-friendly.
Nationwide's?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Just to, as far as my thought process, the more we can do to help the employees, the better off we are. The more flexible we can make it for the employees, the better off we are. Because we want to attract the best people and keep the best people, and this is one way to do it.
Right, and I think that goes back to why we decided to try and establish this committee in the first place. Once again, our retainage or participation is pretty high. We only have, out of the 32 full-time employees, I'd say probably five are not participating, and it probably goes back to their entry-level positions, living paycheck to paycheck. You know, I want to say it's, from our point of view, it's kind of discouraging to see them not participating. We want to try and encourage them as much as possible, but, you know, we understand they have stronger, you know, financial issues. And there may be an education issue too. So one thing that we've, you know, over the two years trying to work with ICMA is we haven't been getting a high level of customer service response. We don't get any account reps that come here and interact with our customers, our employees, to explain to them what's going on, what's happening now. So I think, you know, that's something that we need to look at if we decide to consider and stay with ICMA, is our representative is out of North Carolina. She makes phone calls sporadically whenever she decides. I think we need something better as far as customer service.
Question for you then, if we have those five employees who are not participating, if we change plans, can they then begin to participate?
Correct.
Okay, and if we make it mandatory, then they would have to?
Correct.
Okay, so that's another reason to think about changing.
Correct. Anybody else have anything as far as the introduction, or just high-level overview on the plan questions? Okay.
Is there a termination clause in the plan? I can't recall by.
There is a termination clause. Burgess Chambers and I have looked at it. I believe it's a 60-day notification to ICMA letting them know.
It could be anytime.
If we decide to move forward, we'll handle that whole transition to try and make it seamless. We'll start the new plan, create it, structure it the way we want, and then make that conversion, so it won't affect the employees, and it'll be pretty seamless if we decide to go down that route.
Okay, moving on to item B, fiduciary responsibility.
So this is probably, I'd say, one of the most important items of why we decided to start looking at this and really address this Retirement Plan Committee. So the district as a whole has a fiduciary responsibility to oversee the plan, monitor it, and make sure that, you know, it's the best plan for its employees, and at least make an effort to document that process. So now this process will be documented, we'll have these meetings on an annual basis. Something that a lot of the vendors like Nationwide and Florida League of Cities have offered is fiduciary assistance. So what that means, Nationwide has a state plan who has a formal committee that oversees the plan on a quarterly basis, makes decisions as to whether to keep funds, whether to put them on a watch list, drop funds, put them in. The state committee controls that entire account on a quarterly basis. League of Cities also has a committee that does the same. They would take over complete fiduciary control. We would not have any discretion as to the plan itself as far as performance. The state and the committee would take over responsibility. The Nationwide local plan gives us the ability to work with Morningstar. So Morningstar on a quarterly basis would send me a statement from, let's say Nationwide, it'd send me a lineup, and it'd tell me, keep this plan, keep this lineup, keep this fund, keep this fund, put it on a watch list. It'd give me recommendations, and then I would then make a decision on a quarterly basis to accept Morningstar's recommendation or deny that request. And then every year, I'd come back to the committee with some sort of report showing what I've done for those past three quarters. ICMA currently does not have any sort of fiduciary assistance that they can provide. So what they do, and I've provided Exhibit D, which is just like a normal quarterly statement that we receive, it would take me, I'd be the only sole discretion to look at that report and decide which funds are performing, what I want to do. I'd be making that sole decision on my own at the current moment. So once again, as, you know, we're picking on more workload, reduce staff, I'd say, you know, my attention to the retirement plan is probably 5% of my, my time on a monthly, on a month. 5% I dedicate to the retirement plan. I just don't have, you know, excess time to review each fund and see how it's doing. You know, that's not my expertise, I'm not a stockbroker. So I think by, something else we need to consider, as we are monitoring this plan and making changes, you know, having something like the Morningstar or the state committees take some of that fiduciary responsibility off, the burden off the district would be a big improvement for the retirement plan itself.
I think it would be a necessity.
Yeah, I think it is at this point. It is some sort of necessity. So that's something to consider. Like I said, Nationwide does offer an option for the local with Morningstar, and then the state plan is completely oversaw by the state committee, and then Florida League of Cities has a fiduciary responsibility as well. So do you guys have any questions as far as fiduciary responsibility, or, you know, what we should be moving forward with? Part of that fiduciary responsibility too is looking at plan fees. So what we've done this, this year, there was about $9,000 in forfeitures for employee forfeitures that were inside the plan. They were gaining interest, it wasn't going back to the district in any form, so we decided to cash that forfeiture out, put it back in the general fund. We used $3,000 of that to pay for a consultant to help us benchmark our current plan against these other quotes. Exhibit E, I believe, shows you the full report for Burgess Chambers. Currently, our plan assets are about 0.96% is what we're being charged by ICMA, which equates to about $177 per, per employee. If we go down the line, CPS was a little bit more expensive, it was $184 per employee, and they kind of tailor to, the reason why their costs were a little bit higher is they are more hands-on. They're based out of Lakeland, pretty close by. They would come once a month and talk to our employees, dictate the funds that they can participate in. So it's more of a customer service, you know, higher-end plan. Nationwide local cuts the rate down to $71 per employee, so significant reduction in fees. They've agreed to come on a quarterly basis and meet onsite with our employees, and once again, they do offer the Morningstar fiduciary responsibility included in that fee of 0.39%.
Just a quick question. On CPS, their expense ratio is 0.09%? Very, very small in comparison to the other ones, on the very first bullet point?
That expense ratio is just for their index funds, and sector index funds.
Okay.
But there, if you go down four lines, their administrative custodial and administrative fees are 1%, which equates to 184 that I mentioned.
Oh, okay.
So that's what really the employee as a whole is picking up the burden based off their plan assets.
So all in, the employee would be better off under Nationwide?
Correct. Their fees would go down more than 50%.
Right. That's the way I ran it.
So considering the Nationwide versus the state Nationwide, the fees once again get cut in half. So the benefits of having the state plan is very low fees for the employees and oversight by this Nationwide state committee. It'd basically be self-sufficient and very low funds, very low fees. It only offers a 457 plan, so we wouldn't have the 401A, 457 structure like we do now. It'd be strictly 457. But once again, we wouldn't have any, any oversight issue or fiduciary responsibility on our end, it'd be completely controlled by the state at that point. And their fees would go down to a $48 per person average, which is a third of what they get charged now.
I mean, 457 plans are, as far as the flexibility, that's what makes it very appealing.
Correct.
Is there any, any cons to that approach?
The only cons to the 457 is any contribution set in by the employer will then be subject to FICA taxes. So if we contribute $50, in essence, they're only getting $47 because they get taxed on that $50 contribution, the 7.65%.
So what kind of dollars are we talking about? If we transferred all of our assets to a 457?
It would only be on that initial, on that initial paycheck. So every paycheck, they'd get taxed that FICA tax, which once again, it's one of the deterrents of going into 457. That's why that 401, 457 plays so nice. It's the 401, everything that we put in the 401A is completely tax-free, no burden to the employee. Once we start putting into the 457 on their behalf, then it does become subject to tax.
So we could do a cost analysis of what it would cost the district to do, to go all 457 versus what we have now?
Correct. We could do that.
Okay. Is there any penalties to transfer from a 401A, taking all the assets from a 401A to the 457?
I don't believe there's any rollover issue.
Any rollover issues?
No.
Okay. Because it's per, per individual, and that's how they look at it. So it's going to be rolled from 401A to 457?
Right. Something we should consider is, if we decide to go with a 457 plan, is, I haven't seen, once again, ours isn't designed for vesting schedule, employer contribution. It's just not designed with those specifics. I don't know if there is a way to design the 457 to dictate some of those specifics on the 457 side.
But if we went with a state plan, it's already, all this is designed.
It's already, yeah, it's already, whatever is designed is how you're going to take it. So we would just have to review that plan and decide if we want to.
Honestly, as small as we are, it doesn't make sense to me to try to design your own, if you will. If we had 1,000 employees, it'd be different.
Right.
30-something, just, that doesn't make sense.
One thing that makes, I guess, the state a little challenging is, with the state plan with Nationwide, they allow for, I want to say they have five different vendors that you can choose from. So when I sit down with an employee and say, here's your retirement options, they get the option of picking Vanguard, Voya, they have six different options with six different lineups, and it becomes very complicated at, you know, inception, just to make that first initial decision. So that means six different reps sitting in front of an employee. That's the only other downside to the 457, which once again, you can look at it as a downside, you can look at it as a, as a pro as well, because you have six different options. But that's something to consider, looking into the state plan.
The real issue to me is how much help we would give the employees. Because I mean, I know I manage my own through Nationwide, the one I have, and, you know, you got everything in the world that you can get to.
Right.
The question is, what do you want to get to?
Right.
And if you don't have the expertise, which I don't consider myself to have it either, you're sitting there looking at a website going, I don't know.
Right. And I think that's something to consider too with the state. Once again, I think the state is pretty lucrative as far as fiduciary responsibility and cost. Where I see the downside is for the employees is, I don't feel we'll get a lot of customer service, because we'll be a small fish in that big pond, and for having these account reps come and visit with our employees, I don't know that I can get a commitment from the state reps to do that. I know the local reps have committed to come once a quarter if we want, because they, they do handle the City of Seabreeze account, so that's something to consider, is, do we want that customer service for a little bit more cost? And then we still have some of the fiduciary responsibility, or do we want to pass it all on and eliminate some of that customer service?
They also provide the county a 457 plan, so they do meet with county staff and sheriff's office, I believe, and maybe the constituents, the clerk, and I think, you know, that's outside of FRS. So if any employee wants to contribute to the 457 plan, they can do that through Nationwide here locally, so.
Okay. So I think that covers fiduciary responsibility and plan fees. Once again, this meeting is kind of, you know, there's a lot of information, it's a big overview. I kind of just wanted to give the committee a grasp, a high-level overview of what we're dealing with now, some of the issues that we have, and then have the committee discuss, do we want to, you know, entertain the idea of looking elsewhere? If we do, how we want to proceed with that? If you want more information, what can I bring back to make the transition easier? But I know from ICMA, we are having a lack of customer service, there's a lack of education for our employees, there's a lack of flexibility, fiduciary responsibility. So I can go down the list, and they almost meet every, every one of the checkbox, they're, they're not meeting expectations on each one.
Every negative.
Yeah, right. So, you know.
That's what struck me when I read through this thing, is why are we with these people?
Right.
I mean, if they can't do better than that, and if you look at it from a pure dollars and expense, you're almost, you gotta go with Nationwide one way or the other.
Right.
Really, the issue from the employee's perspective is, two, do I get yours to talk to me, to help me? And two, you know, you have the flexibility to invest in darn near anything, so any of them are going to be okay.
Right.
And that's what we went through when we decided on Nationwide at the bank, was any of the others could, they could do the same thing, but Nationwide would do the same thing and much less expensive, and it's a pass-through to the employee.
Right.
As you say, the only negative is FICA, that I could see.
All right.
I'd like to look at, possibly, looking at the local Nationwide.
Okay.
And is, is a 401A and a 457 still an option for us?
On the local plan, yes.
On the local plan?
We keep the same structure. We would just, you know, my recommendation is have, set up another meeting, have the Nationwide rep come in, and then we can go down these plan structures to decide, do we want to keep the contribution at 5%? How we want to tailor that match? Do we want to make it a match, or do we want to make it mandatory 3 and 5, or 5 and, you know, 3 and 6? Do we want to change that? Change the vesting schedule if we'd like. So all those plan specifics, we can do so, and he can answer more of those specific questions with Nationwide. Once we get through all those details and get the plan exactly how we feel is best for our employees, then we can go through the process of, you know, sending it to the board for a request to terminate with ICMA, giving them 60 days, and then starting fresh with Nationwide, once that's completed. Does that sound like plan?
I'd like to look at a mandatory 3% for employees, and then also just understanding if we, if we don't use 401A, what would it cost the district on the 457 and, you know, having to be able, with the wages, I know that it's going to cost more on, on our end, I believe, on the district's end, excuse me?
Well, if we go with the 401, 457, and we do a mandatory, it won't have any effect, because all, all 5% would go into 457, it's not taxable. If we go into 401A, not taxable. It would only come into play if we choose a state plan and it's 457 contribution.
Okay. So I would be more interested in looking at a local plan.
As long as we can extinguish the liability.
Right. Well, so I think the liability, by having Morningstar and me working with Morningstar and them giving me a recommendation, at least I have something to go off a basis as to why I made that decision and why I made that determination to drop a fund or add a fund. There's some sort of interaction and documentation as to how I got to that conclusion versus me just making a decision with no, really no documentation, no process behind it. I'd have to document it on a quarterly basis on my own. So I think having Morningstar give you that expertise and that help will give us some, once again, some added, you know, reduce our liability as far as fiduciary responsibility on that, on that.
Yeah, I'd be scared to death, though, were you.
Yeah, right.
Today. I guess the question in my mind is, if we're going to talk about a mandatory situation, what happens to the five employees who are not now? Would they have to go to mandatory, or would they be grandfathered?
They'd have to, they'd have to participate going forward.
You have any thoughts on that?
Yeah, I've talked to a few of them. They're living really tight on the, you know, three kids, wife ain't working, isn't working, and they just say they can't swing. Because I said, you need to get into it, you know, you have to know about compounding money with savings accounts. This is going to do you better. And they said, we can't do it right now, we'll wait until we get a little bit more money.
I think that's the, you know, I think that's the hard part in trying to sell them, because once you give them that option, it's always going to be, keep it inside my check as long as I can, but.
Yeah.
Once you take it away, you know, there'll be a sticker shock at first, you know, $30 less than a paycheck, or 50, or 100, whatever it is, there'll be a sticker shock. But once they get used to it, it's kind of out of sight, out of mind, and hopefully in 10 years, 20 years, they'll reap the, they'll reap the rewards, and they'll be grateful for what we decided to do.
I did talk to one guy, and he said, well, if I was hired under the understanding that that would have been out. He goes, now I've got, I'm still living awful tight. That's one guy, you know. I didn't talk to the other four, I just asked them, you know, would they be interested I just asked them, you know, would they be interested in getting into it? Because, you know, I'm going to be, I need the input from you guys to be able to let everybody know what you're thinking.
Yeah, that's what I was talking about, about the discriminatory effect. I mean, I had employees that, I mean, I finally had to sit down and say, look, if I give you a dollar, if you give me a dollar, I give you two back. Are you doing that? Well, yeah, I said, well, that's what we're doing.
Right.
Because we had to, we had to get participation.
Right, and that may be an education issue as well. Once again, by keeping in their paycheck, yeah, they're getting $30 extra or keeping that money. But by putting $30 in, you're getting another 30, so now you've got 60, so you're getting a quick return on your investment.
It has borrowing, I assume it has, would continue to have the same ability to borrow.
Yeah, right. And that's something we need to decide right now, our plan on the 401A. Anyone that contributes in the 401A plan has the ability to take up to five loans on that plan. The 457, those individuals who didn't start initially on that 401A are now stuck in the 457, don't have any loan allowance. So, you know, once again, I think five may be a little excessive. I think there may be one or two, maybe on a hardship basis, if something financially is going wrong and you need that money, then I understand. But once again, this isn't just a savings account where you can withdraw-
Five is very excessive, and that was done under a previous administration.
I was shocked, honestly.
Yeah, and, again, I feel five, five different loans is very excessive.
Just a record-keeping, drives you crazy.
Yeah.
But the employee contribution is non-taxable, meaning there's some, you know, effects on the W2 as far as end-of-year income, it's not taxable. But it is taxable when you take the distribution. So there is some tax benefit to that as well. So if it's $20 every pay period, $30 every pay period, that does not show up in your gross income. So it does help you, you know, on the now part of it, but when you take the distribution, it is taxable at that point. So that's the way it's designed.
Probably 18, 17, 18 for that.
Right.
Right. So, but I understand, though, that it will affect those that are not currently contributing. But I look at the way the Florida retirement system changed, and, you know, that mandatory is becoming more standard, I think, as we're finding. But I'd like to, you know, just know if any of these governments have a mandatory within-
If we could do the mandatory for new employees and grandfathered people in, that would be ideal, even though it's probably not in their best interest, I understand, you know. Been there, done that myself.
Right.
Started as a college student, I was worried about how I was going to buy the next hamburger.
So one thing I've put on the agenda is the plan structure review. Now, I don't know that it makes a lot of sense to go in detail. I think I just want to get a general idea of how you guys feel, like, for example, the mandatory versus voluntary contribution. I kind of just want to get a feel. But for us to go through ICMA, if we're considering changing them, there's not a whole lot of point to go through and try and rewrite this plan. I think I'd just rather have a consensus or a general idea of how you guys are feeling towards one way or the other. So that way, when I go to Nationwide, give them our objectives, or here's how we kind of want to tailor it out, bring back a plan that kind of meets all these needs, and then see what they come back with. So, you know, the first one I have is mandatory versus voluntary. We've talked about that mandatory 3% contribution. On the other side of that, do we all agree that, once they contribute the three, we're going to put in all five on their behalf? Because right now, if they contribute three, they would only get three. So there is going to be additional costs on the district now. For example, those five employees, they're going to now be required to contribute three, but now we're pitching in 5% on their behalf for all five of those employees. So we need to be in agreement that we're dictating 3% will go into the 457 for these employees, and once that happens, we'll automatically put in the full 5%.
Also, something to mention is, we do budget 5% in our departments, even though we want to be sure that we do cover that contribution if it's there, but we did, I don't think you mentioned that part of it, but we do budget the 5% currently.
Right, correct.
And we know we don't meet that, because we still have five employees that don't participate.
Right. So it wouldn't have any effect on the budget. It would have effect on the net financials, because the cash flow would be going out the door. But once again, for budget purposes, it's already factored into our budget, so it wouldn't make our deficit go any higher.
I don't think I've ever seen one that had a 3% contribution with a 5% match. And you kind of then damage the guys that are between 3 and 5, because they're not getting any more match.
Right.
I'd have to think on that one. I mean, I'm good with dollar-for-dollar. I'm good with a-
And that's something we may consider, maybe Nationwide, I can run the idea by him, make it mandatory 3, we match 3, and then as they choose to go to 4. I don't, I just need to clarify with him whether the 401A will give us that flexibility to add-
I don't know.
-or build it where it's, you know, additional percentages can go on, once they contribute more on their side.
The way ours worked, the first percentage, we matched 2 for 1. The second percent, we matched 1 and 1/2 for 1. At the end, we were a half or something, up to 5.
Okay.
So, you know, we were just front-loading the match, which is, in essence, what you're doing.
Right.
I'm not sure I like damaging the person at the 5%.
Okay.
To the detriment of the guy who's doing what he's supposed to do, as opposed to the one that's being made to do. I'd have to think that was really-
Well, I'll try to do, I'll try to come back with two options on that. One, 3 and 5, and then one, 3, 3 with, you know, a percentage increase for every percent they increase.
I guess you could make the mandatory 1%.
Yeah.
As opposed to 3, if you wanted.
Right.
And I don't know if we could graduate that over time. I mean, that's, that would be the maximum flexibility. You go to a mandatory 1%, and then after three years, you go to 3, 2.
Try and scale it.
I mean, I'd like to help them. I follow, you know.
I think they could follow that, you know.
Okay.
If you could see how much flexibility we have, I don't know. I mean, in a 401K, you can pretty much do anything you want to, as long as you don't, as long as you meet the mandatory discrimination testing.
Okay. Next is the employer, employee contribution rates. So this plan was put into place in 2004 by Mike Wright at the time. It was dictated the 5% match. I've provided you a list of other governmental entities, and I've also provided you FRS, which has been scaling. So when you look, I believe it's Exhibit F, page 3 of Exhibit F, currently, FRS for a normal employee contributes 8.26%, with a mandatory 3% for the employee, which is a total contribution of 11.26%. That's an increase from last year, which was at 10.92%. So it went from a 7.92% for the employer up to an 8.26. You see that 8.26 highlighted? So every year you go up is the prior year. So it went from 8.26, 7.92, 7.52, 7.26. So they've been scaling it almost like a cost-of-living adjustment. There's been a slight fluctuation in how much the employer is required to contribute on behalf of the employee on FRS. I've also highlighted, FRS has a tier for senior management, which is pretty drastic. The employer contributes 24.06% on behalf of the employee, the employee contributes 3% for a total contribution of 27.06%. So I've done the analysis, I've plugged those numbers in for the districts, and it almost doubled our burden, budget burden, if we were decided to do something, anything similar to FRS, which is something that I would never recommend to the board to do, just because of how big of a burden it is. What I do think is, maybe we should consider, you know, it's been 14 years since we made any adjustment to that employee contribution. So maybe we should consider going up. The question that follows after that is, where are we going to get the money from? So we've done some internal analysis. We have it, based on the consensus here today, we have our MetLife coverage right now, currently covers life insurance, two times employee salary, AD&amp;D coverage, in case they lose a limb, or two limbs, or eyesight, short-term disability and long-term disability. We recently reached out to Florida Blue, who was able to cut our life insurance premium in half, which was a $3,500 savings. Short-term disability, we're considering eliminating altogether because of the new employee manual policy, which provides more sick time, up to 960 hours. So there shouldn't be a case where the employee can't cover that short-term burden with their sick time. That would be about a $6,000 to $7,000 savings, so about $10,000 between those two. And then long-term disability, we're on the fence. We pay about $6,000 a year in long-term disability. Something that we learned in our conversation recently is, let's say we have an employee who's covered in the long term, to get in a severe accident or have something that's catastrophic happen to them, once, you know, they're eligible, as of the date that that happens, they're eligible for their coverage. The district in three months decides, we can't keep this position open and vacant for this long, we need to replace it, we terminate that employment, they are still eligible for their coverage. So that's something to consider, is, they're no longer on your invoice, they're no longer, you know, you're no longer being charged for their premiums, but that employee's still covered and has some sort of income stream coming in, in that sort of situation. So I'm on the fence about the long term, but I think short term definitely needs to go, and then cutting our life insurance premium in half is about $10,000 in savings. That's already an employee benefit, and maybe we can transfer it to their retirement contribution, and it just offsets each other. Right now, a 7% increase, going from 5 to 7% would be about a $20,000 burden. 6% may fall right on the $10,000 saving amount that we are discussing now.
This is the only retirement plan that we fund for the employees? Or do they have an additional?
They do not.
This is it.
So are you looking for a consensus from us on the-
Well, I'm looking for a consensus whether you guys think we should look at increasing that contribution amount. Once again, it is going to affect budget, but we'll be offsetting that. My recommendation is, we offset that increase in burden with a decrease in another benefit, which would be the short-term disability, eliminating that, and then obtaining a better rate with the life insurance premium.
Well, actually, we would be eliminating the life insurance plan with MetLife, right?
We'd be eliminating going to Florida Blue, whose rate is now half of what MetLife is offering.
Okay. And then, what about long-term disability? Do you see any benefit for the district to even have that currently?
Like I said, I'm on the fence with long term right now. My reservation with long term was that the district would still have a financial burden if we terminated that employee. Florida Blue has come back and said, that's not the case, your burden stops the day of termination. So my concern is, we have an employee who comes with cancer, or gets in a severe accident and is out for a year, two year, and can't work. They don't have any means of income source for that employee. You know, with long term, they'd be receiving 60% of their salary, and then, once again, once we terminate that employee, we don't, we don't pick up that premium anymore.
You said $6,000 annual premium?
Correct.
That's a pretty cheap price to pay for taking care of a good employee.
Right.
Can we use Florida Blue for the long term?
Yes, yeah. So they've quoted the life insurance, AD&amp;D, short-term and long-term. All of them are reduced savings over what we have now in MetLife. I think the cost for short-term before was $6,000, and they dropped it to $4,000. But once again, I think we should just eliminate it altogether.
Okay, so you're recommending to eliminate the plan with MetLife, correct?
Correct.
That's all the coverages, so we would need to bring a resolution to the Board of Supervisors to recommend a termination of MetLife, and that includes life insurance, short-term, long-term, and then-
AD&amp;D.
ADD.
Correct.
Which is accidental death and dismemberment. And then, we would, January 1, we would go on-
Right, so MetLife has a 30-day cancellation clause, so we'd go to the Board of Supervisors in November, the next board meeting, for the cancellation request. Cancel as of December 1, give us 30 days. January 1, we'd start with Florida Blue, so there'd be no loss in coverage for any of the employees.
Just for life insurance and then long-term?
And AD&amp;D.
Oh, and AD&amp;D.
AD&amp;D, I think the annual premium is $500. So it's very inexpensive. So we'll keep those three coverages, as long as we decide, as long as the board decides to do so.
The Florida Blue, is this the county plan?
This is completely separate, same provider, but it's completely separate. They've quoted us completely separate.
And that's Florida Blue directly?
Correct.
Okay.
Makes sense. So, I mean, if we're eliminating something that we really don't need, because we extended the benefit-
Elsewhere.
Elsewhere. But I really don't like the idea of dropping long-term coverage.
Okay.
So I'll make a motion to recommend to the Board of Supervisors, terminate the agreement or the plan with MetLife for all the coverages that you mentioned, and then we're going to sign up with Florida Blue for life insurance, ADD, and then long-term.
Right. And then the savings, are you guys recommending that we utilize that as an increase in the contribution? Or are we going to use that savings elsewhere?
I would say we use it.
For the 6%? Okay.
Sounds good.
Yeah.
Okay.
You need a second. Is this a formal deal? You need a second, and you're both? I'll second it.
So the next, the next is vesting schedule. Like I said, this plan's been in place since 2004. I believe the vesting schedule before 2004 was, year one was 20% vested, year two was 40, 60, 80, 100. So it took you five years to get completely vested. Currently, our plan is set up two years. First year, 50%, second year, you're 100% vested. That's something that we should discuss now, as to whether we agree with the 50/100, or we want to go back to something like we had before, where it takes the employee a little bit longer to vest, before they, you know, they decide to terminate employment, or sever their employment with the district, they're not running out with all 100% of the district's contribution in two years.
You're talking about just the matching.
Just the matching, correct. Just the employee, just the district contribution percentages, so.
That's always kind of a double-edged sword, because you really want the longer term from the district's perspective, but to try to talk the employees into participating, it's a lot easier to do if they have a shorter-term vesting schedule, so maybe there's a compromise, three years?
I like what we have. In comparison to the FRS investment plan, you're vested in the first 12 months, 100%. So that, is that what the state of Florida still has?
I believe it.
When they designed the investment plan 15, 16 years ago, I don't know how long it's been, maybe 20, but you have two options in FRS. One is the regular pension, the other is the investment plan. And they designed it back, even back then, first 12 months, you're vested 100%. So I've, that is, that might be a little excessive.
I think on the pension side, they don't, they're not eligible for the pension until-
Correct.
How long is it, 20 years?
They changed the vesting, I think, I don't know much about the pension side, just the investment plan itself and the investment. So you have two choices as an employee. So I like what we have, or I might consider some, something in between. But I like the two years 100% that we have.
Yeah, I wouldn't want to get it back to one.
Right.
I think five's, I think five's a little froggy. I could live with two, or I could live with three. Either way, I don't care.
So five's too far, two or three, kind of-
I'm fine with what we have.
I'm okay with it.
Okay.
Okay.
We really want to keep the employees, but if that's the last determinant, they're unhappy, they're going anyway, so it doesn't-
Yeah. So the last item that I have is just loans. Once again, I mentioned, I had a request recently, in the last couple of months, for an employee who's on the 457. We're deciding, you know, we may not even have this plan anymore, so he's kind of holding off for now. But he was requesting a loan. 457 does not offer any loan allowance at the current moment. The 401A currently allows five loans on that side. So something just up for discussion, do we want to keep the same going forward, or do we want to make an adjustment to that five, five loan max?
Well, your issue gets to be, would you rather have five loans, or would you rather have one or two? Because what's going to happen is they got a loan and you say, no, you can't get another one. Well, then I'll pay that one off with a bigger one. So I mean, it's kind of, it's a record-keeping issue for me.
Right.
I've been down that road and it's, you know, you always wind up having to explain it to the employees because they don't understand compounded interest and they don't understand all the other stuff. So it's, it's a problem, or at least I would think it would be a problem for you administratively.
Right, yeah. I think it was about eight months ago, we decided as a district, we were, we were a part of the entire loan process. So employee would have to come in, request a loan, we'd have to go through paperwork, we'd have to know why they're taking a loan. We decided eight months ago to eliminate that process. Now it's strictly between ICMA and the employee. The district didn't want to be involved in that reasoning or, you know, making approval or denial of that request. So as long as they meet the guidelines per ICMA, as long as they're under that 50% threshold of their account balance, and they're pretty much can just take the money as they please. But once again, there is a double taxation issue because they're being taxed as they withdraw, and then they're paying it back with after-tax money, and eventually they'll withdraw it again, so.
Yeah, it's not the real, it's not the real smart thing to do.
No, like I said, it should be a last, last resort, so.
You make it too easy, though, if it comes to the path of least resistance.
Right.
Instead of going to wherever and borrowing money to buy a car, they're in here wanting a car loan, and they don't understand that it's costing them double.
So if we had an option of one loan, and then the employee pays it off, can they?
We go back and get, yeah, they keep one loan.
So two loans at one time?
No.
No, you can't.
I'm sure they could probably refinance or maybe do some sort of restructuring, but it's only one loan at a time.
Right now?
No, 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 I'm saying in your situation, right now, we can do five. So right now.
So five at one time, you could be paying on five at one time.
Correct.
But, but what Omar's saying, if we went down to allowing a loan, once you have that loan paid off, you could actually get another loan. Is that correct? But you can have one open at one, at any point in time during your employment.
And we can make it, I believe in each plan, there's, you know, you can set the definition. We can make it a hardship only where they have to prove, you know, they don't have any savings or, you know, it's a catastrophe or a disaster or house repairs, something that meets the criteria. It can't just be, I want to get my car painted tomorrow. So we can make it hardship only, or we can have it where it's just a free-for-all. We can make that determination as to how specifically we want to make it.
I don't know that we should be involved in that decision-making, you know, necessarily. I like the fact that we did change where the employee works directly with the, I mean, with ICMA for all the paperwork. Because I, because some of that is very private matters, you know, based on your own reasoning. You shouldn't have to explain it to me or Omar, you know, of why loans are taken out. So I think we should reduce the five to definitely one, but I could be open to two, but.
I agree with you completely. You don't, I mean, mine has always been hardship. And then you get into, which is hardship to you may not be a hardship to me, and who's the final arbiter, and it's.
There's an actual hardship application that you have to file with ICMA. It's pretty detailed and in-depth. They want to know checking account balance and savings account balance, it's.
Well, we didn't do that, but you had to explain to us what the purpose of the loan request was.
Right.
And if it was, I want a new car, and the answer is no, because I need to pay for my kid's doctor bills, that's another matter.
Yeah.
But, you know, it's really not something you want to be in the middle of, you can avoid it.
Okay, so one, and it, no restrictions on that one allowance is kind of what I'll go with the guidance for now on the new plans.
I'm okay. Now, do you, are you talking about, you can only borrow from the money you put in, or can you borrow against?
Whatever you're vested in at the time. And I think there's a 50% requirement. They won't lend you over 50% of what your balances, your vested balance, so.
Kind of defeats the purpose for this being your retirement account. It's like taking a distribution from your 401K or your IRA. I mean, you get a double whack.
Oh, yeah.
I'm not sure people understand that always.
So I think going forward, based on today's meeting, next step is we'll start working on plan design with Nationwide. We'll come back with a couple of options on the state and the local, just for an option to pick between those two at the next meeting. Once we come to a decision between one of those two plans, we'll then make a recommendation to the board to cancel with ICMA and then start that transition once we finalize all the paperwork. Okay?
You'll come back with some additional information.
Yeah, I'll come back. Some things I need to look at is see if some of the other cities that are contributing a little bit more, are they, how they're structuring their plan, and I'll have ICMA come up with a couple of different structures for our contribution matching. And then come back with how much, if the 6% will cover the $10,000 in savings, and show you what that looks like across the board for our employees. Is there anything else that you can think of?
Honestly, I don't really care. That's not enough money in the grand scheme of our budget to make any difference, but it's important for the employee.
Right.
So I would say, let's just, I don't do it.
I just want to make sure it went back, some sort of, back in an employee benefit in some sort of fashion. We saved over $100,000 last year in health insurance benefits that didn't go back to the employees. So for this to go back, I think it means a lot to the employees.
No, I agree.
Like I said, it hasn't changed in 14 years, so 1%, I think it's due at this point.
Okay, um, public comment, a public comment, so we probably want to go ahead and schedule a next meeting date?
Yes.
Okay. Um, maybe in January? Or, we're already, tomorrow's November 1 already, so. Or December? Is there a deadline?
Well, I need to check with Nationwide as well to see what their schedule looks like. So let me send an email out at some point in time to see how everything falls. I don't think there's any requirement for the 60-day notice. It could happen in January, February, March. It doesn't really matter when we decide. There's going to be some time for us to create a plan with Nationwide on both sides to make sure it meets all our requirements, and then.
Okay, what we are coming back to the board with, though, is a resolution to terminate MetLife. So we need to do that for the next board meeting.
Yes.
Because that's a, we do have a deadline for that one.
Right.
But the other one is just a 60-day notice, so we're not under any deadlines. So how long do you think it'll take you to get back, you know, get through this information? Because we, you know, we have the auditors there in December. I know that y'all are trying to prepare for the audit and other things.
Yeah, we also have the assessment appeal will happen in December as well, so I think in December, we should be able to make it happen. I know Nationwide, I've been in contact with Nationwide and Florida Lee, and they're all, they're all been in good communication. So we should be in a good place December, and then come back to the board maybe January, mid-January.
So we have a Board of Supervisors meeting December 14, which is a Friday. Did you want to try to meet? See, the auditors will be here that week, so that's not a, not a good time.
So maybe the first meeting in January is when we'll go to the board, but we'll have a committee meeting after that December 14 meeting to go over the state and local plan. So we'll try and, once again, we'll look at it because I know there's a lot of vacation time and people out of town for Christmas and around December, January time, but.
So that's December.
I'll send you guys a couple of dates, late December, early January.
You are, okay. Okay. All right, sounds good.
All right, thank you, guys.
Meeting adjourned.